Right, okay, so we're just gonna get started. All right, um, welcome to the May 12th School Committee meeting. I have no announcements to make except that we are doing this by Zoom and East Hampton Media is recording this meeting. It really should be the time for public speak right now, so Marissa, do you want to begin letting people in?
Should I admit them all or admit them one at a time?
Uh, you could, we could probably admit them all and then all on mute and then you'll just unmute them one at a time.
Okay. Great. And do you have a recommendation for how we know who, should I just go through each one and ask them if they'd like to speak?
Who raised their hand in the chat? Feature down below, there's a section called reactions at the bottom. And they can raise their hand and if they raise their hand or they can simply do this.
Fantastic. Okay, so if anyone would like to speak, if you wanna raise your hand, your physical hand or you're with a reaction, I'll be glad to unmute you.
I don't see anybody with your hands raised.
This is for public speak.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
All right, Lori is here, let me let her in. All right, well.
Yeah, no, Brian is here, I don't know if Brian wants to, I thought Brian wanted to speak.
Brian, did you wanna speak?
I do wanna speak. I tried my hand but I got thumbs up dead, so. I missed the icon.
So please state your name and then go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Brian Miller, I'm the Athletic Director at East Hampton High School. Uh, and one thing I wanted to to speak on was the payment of our spring coaches. Obviously, the season never took place, so a full stipend wouldn't be appropriate, but a lot of work was done prior to the season. Mandatory things, for instance, there was a three-hour parent meeting they had to attend. Got some things, um, they're required to do concussion course, they're required to be CPR certified. They took a bullying prevention course. So there were plenty of requirements for the coaches prior to the season, and so I think it would be it would be good for us to to compensate them for the required time. Like I said, a full stipend wouldn't be appropriate, in my opinion, but having looked at other schools in the area, I reached out to about twenty other schools and the average compensation looks like it's gonna be about five hundred dollars for a varsity coach and about two fifty for a junior varsity coach. So I think, you know, it would be good for us to kind of be online with that, which breaks down to about fifteen percent of their stipend pay. Only about five schools weren't gonna pay at all, whereas I think seventeen were gonna pay some portion of the stipend. And even during, you know, while we've been doing distance learning and whatnot, even though they weren't in direct contact with the athletes, we have asked them to stay in contact with the athletes. You know, we felt like that's important. On April fifteenth, the MIA kinda waived Rule Number Forty, which limits the amount of contact they're meant to have with athletes out of season. So they've been creating instructional videos, reaching out to the athletes on a weekly basis just to touch base, see how they're doing. So we have had that expectation for them as well during this time. So, having said that, you know, I I think it would be in good faith to to give them a small amount of their stipend to compensate for the work that they have done prior to the season and during this time of distance learning. So, that's about all I wanted to say on that.
Thank you.
You?
Anybody else? Please raise your hand or signal that you'd like to speak. All right, I don't see anybody, Marissa, do you see anybody that wants to speak?
I'm not seeing anybody.
All right, and we're gonna go on and we will go to Subcommittee Updates. Maren, do you wanna start?
Uh, we have not, Financial Subcommittee has not met since the last meeting.
In policy?
Um, we have not met, but we do have an extensive list from our last meeting that at some point, I don't know if we're gonna wait until we get back in regular session to start going through those.
So you have a list of deletions and additions that you guys would like to add?
None of it was urgent, right, Shannon, it was all sort of working back through the book, but nothing that we need to get urgently onto the books?
There was a couple of new ones from MASC that we were holding off till our next meeting, until we got through the the list that we had. So I don't know if we should just skip the list and put that on the shelf and go forward to the ones that need to be updated.
I think that would make sense, yeah.
Okay, so I'll get with you guys and we'll try to schedule a Zoom meeting.
So, okay.
Okay.
But we'll have to have them presented at another one, but that'll be in a month or two?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. All right, and do we have a collaborative update? Oh, Maren has his hand.
Sorry, just real quickly too, I do think that what I have in my notes is that the Finance Subcommittee though is meeting next Monday at five PM. Is that what we still had on our books to be able to go over the next quarter, or is that old calendar reminder that we need to update?
Um, I would defer to Dale, who's in the in the group. I don't know. It's fine with me if we wanna meet.
I'm I'm having a total brain freeze, I thought we had done the third quarter.
We did just meet, um, so we just had our small Finance Subcommittee meeting.
And that, and that was the third quarter, right? So we wouldn't have a need to meet to review those quarterly reports until after June. And typically that one, because we're closing the fiscal year, we hold till the early fall.
Let me, I, so what I'll I'll say is let me look back at the notes from that meeting and get back in touch with everybody tonight or tomorrow. If there was some reason that we said we wanted to schedule it for a month later, because I, yeah, we did have one in mid-April, but Dale?
My brain is thawing, it's been cold here in Vermont today. Um, I think there was some desire to get together again before the end of the fiscal year to take stock of where we were gonna end up with this year relative to the fear that we would be, could be in a position where we would need to have some kind of cushion going into the next year. Does that make, does that ring any bells for anybody?
Yes. So is that a meeting that's best happening in the very first part of June or the last week in May?
First week of June sounds like it would be appropriate to May.
Okay, I'll I'll send out a meeting request and we'll we'll schedule that and get that on the books then.
All right. Jonathan, do we have a collaborative update?
Sure, so I didn't prepare anything for tonight's meeting, we have not met since back in, I think, the end of March it was. So I expect we'll have one coming up at the end of this week, but there's always updates and stuff that Executive Director Bill Deal is sending out. And if it would be of interest to you folks, I'd be happy to compile some highlights in time for our next meeting to speak on that.
Sure.
Cool.
Sounds good.
I will absolutely do that, I mean, they're in you know, the same boat that we are on a much broader scale. So, yeah, I will do that, um, because he sends them out regularly, so I'll call through and pull out some highlights for you guys, uh, and we'll talk about that next time, how about?
Excellent, and Lori, I'm assuming that wellness is on a freeze right now, or do you have an update? You're on mute.
Yeah.
There you go. There's no. You just muted yourself again. So, hi.
Hi, sorry about that, no update right now.
Okay, good, all right, so, um, school closure, COVID update is the next on the agenda?
So, um, well, we have continued with our plans to proceed through the rest of the school year. Now we're beginning to put some thought into what next school year might look like and what summer programming might look like. All indications are that summer programming would also exist in a remote format, unless we hear otherwise, but we're planning on remote learning in the summer right now. One thing that I would like to open, I'll just take a minute to talk about is graduation, which is related to the school closure. And we have some guests tonight, we have Bill Evans and Sue Welson to talk to all of us about the graduation plan that they are proposing because it moves away from our original graduation date of June fifth, and so if we could unmute Bill and Sue and allow them to have a few minutes to talk about the graduation plan, that would be great.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all. And thanks for having us and thanks for inviting us in to to talk about graduations, so. We've had a number of conversations with, started with the senior class officers, worked with the entire senior class in a very large Zoom meeting with all of the senior parents and another very large Zoom meeting. We've sent surveys out to both groups to ask for their feedback on what they want. We met with the class officers, I think, two or three times and with the student body twice, parents once, and and through email and surveys, et cetera. So overwhelmingly, the students and the parents want to hold out as long as possible to have a live graduation ceremony. That is what came across in the in the surveys by a wide margin. We all know that we have no idea if we can provide that or not at any time in the foreseeable future. Each one of us maybe has a a date in mind of when we can start doing things and when we can start inviting people into the building. And the bottom line is, none of us actually knows. So, um, in order to both honor the request of the students and the parents to do everything we can to have a live ceremony, we are proposing to schedule one. At the same time, we recognize that there's a an outside chance that we won't be able to do one. And if that's the case, we wanna make sure we have something for students to participate in and some record of it in the immediate future. So, um, our grad, our proposal has two parts, and I'll do them chronologically. The first is a, an opportunity for students, it's actually, I think, a compilation video would be the best way to describe it, I don't wanna call it a graduation ceremony. But in this, and you've probably seen some other examples of it in neighboring communities, students will have a ten-minute window to come to the building during the week of June first through June fifth. June fifth being the the scheduled graduation date. We're scheduling it over those days so that students can come one person at a time. We're not, we're not planning to have a long line of cars wrapping around the block or a large crowd waiting in the parking lot. You know, we've, we've heard from our health officials and they've dissuaded us from trying to do anything that would potentially become a a large gathering. And they're teenagers and, you know, they can be unpredictable sometimes. So the idea is that each have a ten-minute window, one car per per graduate, they pull up to the front, we'll have our custodial crew set up the stage in in the patio, like it, which is typically where graduation happens. East Hampton Media has graciously agreed to help us and to film each graduate coming across the stage, having their name announced, picking up their diploma. It won't be handed to them, they'll pick it up off a off a stand. I'll congratulate them without going anywhere near them. And then they can stand with their family and take a picture and then get in their car and go away. So it's a ten-minute thing and East Hampton Media will then take each each of the little videos and and string them together into a cohesive piece and make that available publicly and also for people to to download, I think, for a fee. That ceremony, we would also include not full speeches in the hopes of holding off for a live ceremony, but remarks from everybody that is scheduled to speak at regular graduation, just to have those marked at the at the beginning of the ceremony, so that the congratulatory remarks from the superintendent, from myself, from the valedictorian, et cetera. But again, try to distinguish between a live ceremony and this ceremony, these would be shorter, briefer, I guess those are the synonyms. Briefer messages, just welcoming and congratulating. So that's part one. Part two of the plan is to have a live ceremony, I believe the date we have singled out is Thursday, August thirteenth. We hear from students that if if freshman orienter, if a first-year orientation at colleges goes on scheduled, then many students will be leaving the weekend of the fifteenth, that's as early as we have heard. So we're trying to schedule a ceremony before that happens. I don't know that August thirteenth will guarantee everybody's ability to participate, but it is, it is as late as we can with the information that we have. That ceremony, we would hope to have in at an outdoor venue. Possibilities include daily field, the baseball field that's adjacent to the high school parking lot. Nana Tuck Park could also be a possibility, the soccer field. And if and Billiston's football field is also a possibility, and which has lights, which could be a benefit. The ceremony would be scheduled for the evening, it being a hot summer day, assuming, so it'd start at six o'clock. Use a large field so that we can spread people out. Chairs would be measured and placed and we could chalk the field to accommodate, make sure people staying within a and their socially appropriate distance from each other. Families, we anticipate immediate families only. And they, again, would be separated up by family units, so if you live with people, you obviously can could be with them, but we want family units to be separated from each other. Stage could be set up just off the infield and sort of between first and second base, facing right field, there's plenty of room in that space. And I think that could work. The backup for that, if, um, if rules don't allow us to do that, would be, our hope would, our next hope would be the Thanksgiving weekend. That would require us to be indoors, which would require a different set of rules, because we would need to have everybody in the gymnasium. So, again, we're not sure, nobody knows if either one of those are going to be allowable. But our hope is to plan for them and intend to have them and cancel them only if we are told we have to cancel them by people who know better. So that's our, that's our plan. So I don't know if there's anything I missed that you think you should, you should add.
No, you did a great job, Bill, and just thank you to all the students and families that graciously communicated lots of ideas for us to think about and for the officers that have really put a lot of time into the thought process behind this.
Maren, you have any questions?
I don't, it's funny, my district came up with almost the exact same plan, it's like you're all thinking on the same wavelength, the kids agreed to the basic, the same time, we have a tentative in August and then Thanksgiving weekend as our fallback date, which, I mean, we just have no idea, so I think as creative as we can be and as close as we can be to a traditional graduation, you know, these are crazy times, but I like the ideas, they're great.
We, we're also open to waiting, you know, all the way until next June if we have to. Our commitment is to provide these kids with the graduation ceremony that they want and that they deserve. There's a concern about at what point will interest wane and will people feel like they just need to move on? But I do, you know, my message to the students and the parents and Dr. Leclerc's message to them all along has been, we're committed to having this ceremony and we'll do what we can to make it happen, so.
I would just like to throw one thing out there, I mean, obviously you guys have put a lot of thought into it and a lot of our students and their parents have, so thank you very much for helping with all that process. We can certainly figure out what's gonna be the best. I, the one thing I would just, off of what you made the comment of, is that there might be a fee involved in terms of students having to pay for this video or something like that, I think that, you know, once we find out what that cost would be, I think it would be understandable for us to look into understanding what that cost is and knowing what the overall cost is before we start charging students for that kind of a video, so I just would want us to find out the information and then be able to make a decision whether or not we can afford that or have to really pass it on to students or not.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I think, um, you know, it would, my initial conversation was really a, just one conversation with the representative for East Hampton Media. And I think we were a long ways from knowing exactly what it would entail and what it would cost, but certainly their commitment was to do the film and to make it publicly available for people to view. And this is a question of whether they can download it and what that would take, so. But I appreciate the thought that we would try and help families out with it.
Allison?
Just a question, and this is a clarification for Sue Colby, does the committee need to vote on changing the graduation to that one-week span instead of June fifth?
I don't have an answer for you on that.
We never voted on the actual.
Right, there's never been a vote on on the actual day for graduation.
I don't know why we would have to.
Okay.
Yeah, and just, just also clarify, we would be giving the diplomas out during that, during the week of June first. And then, uh, we're hoping to order another set of diploma covers and provide those during the live ceremony so that we don't have to ask them to give the covers back after they've graduated, after they've got their diploma. So graduation would technically be during the week of June one through June five.
All right, sounds good, Bill, I think that everyone is is feeling positive about that, right?
Terrific.
Okay.
Thank you, we'll start, we'll letting the, start letting the the community know. We'll, we'll put it out on on various outlets to make sure everybody's aware of the, of the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next thing on the agenda is the school building project update?
Sure, so one positive thing that I can share is that steel has arrived on site, so that's pretty momentous, there, it, I think, arrived yesterday was the first day and we're getting steel every day now for the next few weeks. So that means that you're really going to start seeing some actual building going up. So that's pretty exciting, they have been going at full steam. One thing I will announce at this point while while we're talking about the construction project is they have taken over more of the entrance going into Whitebrook just for the trucks and everything, because they have so much going on. So, um, on the day of voting next week, people will be able to enter the main entrance and then they will exit via Button Road if they're, if they're voting on that day. We don't anticipate that many cars, but there really is not a way to do two-way traffic right now on the entrance to Whitebrook, so, and we don't need it except for that one day. So Barbara Labombarde will be communicating that out, I think she's doing a reverse code red, um, she's been talking with the police department about that, so. We continue to meet as a construction team every Thursday morning. And they're making great headway, they're following all the precautions for COVID nineteen, they're wearing masks, they're doing what they need to do. They have hand sanitizing stations everywhere, so they really feel as though they're in a good place right now, so. That's what I have for that. And the building committee has not met in the last few months, but I anticipate there'll probably be a meeting in May, just because Zoom and everything else, we have not met in person.
All right, anything else on the building? Okay. So, we were going to look at a resolution, Marissa, I believe you have it, for increased funding. Do you have that with you?
I do have it here, let me open up another window. Did you want me to read that?
Uh, yeah, and I, we can discuss it and decide to vote for it or not.
All right, hang on one second.
So this, just some background, um, I think Shannon found it first and I got it from, we got it from the School Building, uh, School Committee Association, is that right, Shannon, I think, that's where it was sent out? And so we kind of rewrote it just a little bit so it fits East Hampton. But a lot of school districts are presenting this, so, Marissa?
Yes, so I can read this in full if you'd like. And so this is the East Hampton School Committee Resolution in Support of Increased Federal Support and Stimulus Funding for Public K through twelve Education. Whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic is a monumental and unprecedented challenge emerging quickly and demanding an immediate overhaul of the instructional plans and strategies of school systems across the country and whereas the nation's public schools remain committed to delivering high-quality instruction while ensuring the health and safety of our students and staff. And whereas to date, the two hundred seventy-nine employees of the East Hampton Public Schools have worked around the clock to continue to provide our one thousand five hundred fifty-six EPS students and families with access to food, shelter, wifi, and other educational needs, distributing more than twenty-four hundred meals weekly and approximately three hundred Chromebooks. And whereas the East Hampton Public Schools in the city of East Hampton have maintained payroll for over two hundred seventy-nine full and part-time district employees, providing stability to our community during economic uncertainty. And whereas these challenges will persist and likely grow as COVID nineteen affects our economy and destabilizes funding for public schools. And whereas reputable economists have predicted the end of the nation's economic expansion and forecast a recession that may be deep and long-lasting. And whereas any nationwide recession is likely to affect suburban areas and their poorest citizens. And whereas the number of unemployment claims in the nation's cities are already the highest we've seen since the Great Depression and may only grow. And whereas public school systems across the country are already incurring substantial unexpected costs to provide meal services and purchase and deploy digital instructional devices. And whereas public school systems are facing difficult decisions about how to allocate dwindling financial resources to sustain high-quality instruction and other essential services for students and families over the next several years. And whereas revenue shortfalls will unequivocally result in budget cuts and personnel reductions in school systems. Whereas these budget cuts will be happening at the same time that public Whereas these budget cuts will be happening at the same time that public school systems will be working to address the immense instructional challenge of unfinished learning that many students will face coming out of this school year. And whereas public education is one of the largest employers of any organization, public or private, in the nation. And whereas research has repeatedly found a strong causal relationship between levels of schooling and wages that individuals earn over a lifetime. And whereas for public schools to thrive and for our students to realize a bright and productive future, the federal government needs to make a substantial new investment in our well-being. And whereas the Council of the Great City Schools, the National Education Association, the American Federation of Teachers, the National School Boards Association, the American Association of School Administrators, and the National Parent Teachers Association, and others have called for some $200 billion in relief for the nation's public schools. And whereas this level of funding is the minimum needed by the nation's public schools to sustain and accelerate their academic achievement trends over the past decade, including gains in reading and math achievement that outpace the national average. Therefore, let it be resolved that the chairperson and members of the East Hampton School Committee join with the superintendent of schools in urging the Massachusetts Congressional delegation, including our United States Senators and House of Representative members to advocate for and approve additional federal education funding for our nation's public schools.
Thank you, Marissa. That was a lot to read. Any discussion?
I would certainly fully endorse this. Thank you for, to those of you who did the work of getting our East Hampton facts worked into this resolution.
That was Sue, I think.
Thank you, Sue.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to thank you for considering it, you know, after I sent it. I read through the, the one that they had given and I thought it was very meaningful.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's funny. You found it, you got it about two minutes before I opened it up and I was just reading it. Then I got yours and I said, oh, this looks good. So it was good, very good. Any other discussion? I'm ready for a vote. I'm looking. Okay. Let's have a little call vote. Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mire?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Crary, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Great. I really liked that. It was well-written. So we've done that. So on to our superintendent update. Whoops, you're muted, Allison.
Okay. I'm going to begin the transportation update. So we have a few different transportation things to talk about. And so I've asked Dale to pop into the meeting because she can give us some of the more technical information. So as I have shared with some of you already, I think the, well, I think you all know this. The directive from the Department of Education has been to continue to pay vendors throughout the school closure. We met, or Dale reached out and met with the vendor from our primary transportation company, Durham, for several times in the last month or two. And we have been trying to work on an agreement with them. But I think we shared out with all of you, and I think it was to pay approximately 74% of their actual contract. We have not paid any bills yet since the closure. So they have been continuing to work. For people in the audience, they continue to work. If you see our buses around the community, normally we have seven buses out in the community of East Hampton. We're running five buses now, three days a week. They are delivering meals. We're serving approximately 2,500 meals per week. And the majority of them are being dropped off at homes. So they have been doing that. We are, when we talk about a breakdown of what that 74% would be, it would be to keep their employee payroll going, to pay for the insurance on the buses. All of us are driving cars right now. Well, some of us are driving them less than others, but we still have to pay insurance and have to pay for the upkeep of the car. So that's similar to what they have to do as well. We have a space where the buses are housed and we have a portion of housing those buses at that garage. So those are the types of things that they're looking to charge for. So that was one piece of our transportation discussion. We have that piece of information. The city has a different piece of information and around paying vendors. And, and the mayor may want to jump in. And I think that the one piece that is unknown, the mayor may have an updated information on this because she has her pulse probably on the legislature more than I do, is there was updated guidance going through the legislature to, to help us, guide us through this process. And I know it made it through the Senate and I think that was last week. Nicole, have you heard anything further?
I, I have, I have not gotten an update from Representative Carey and, and he knows this is a hot-button issue. So I'm sure is, there was even movement. He's just really great at, at getting back and saying, this is where it is in the process. I did talk to Attorney General as well as the Department of Local Services around these types of transportation contracts, as well as member, members of the Board of Education. My, my concern is, is twofold. One, a general principle of law called unjust enrichment. The renegotiation of a contract for substantially different services with less liability. If it's over $30,000 for the total service, then it would be subject to 30B procurement laws. And that has not been waived under the state's, the state's declaration of, of emergency. And that, that's where that okay would have to be. And, and secondly, are the city internal auditor Val Bernier can find nothing to support payment of any of those POs, whether it's a full 100% or 74%, while I really appreciate Dale's. And I, I know it wasn't just one conversation with the transportation providers to, you know, to, to negotiate down. There are districts who have already paid it, thinking it, or looking at it as something that has already been budgeted. I will now switch to my mayor and taxpayer hat and, and just find it to be unconscionable that a transportation company with a high profit margin, where we pay them, what, $54,000 a month to provide transportation for us, for them to think that we should spend 74% of that total bill to keep their employees and business afloat, I, I think is unconscionable. And I think it, it's a strong case for unrich in enrichment. And there is contract law here as well as 30B. And as well as, you know, our expectation of services have changed dramatically because of force of nature, right? Force major bar. And, and there is unclear legal precedent here. But most of all, the school was funded by me at 0%. And our total budget is 1.098 and we have a projected revenue stream for the city as a total, which also affects the school budget. You know, I would, you know, it's not impossible for me to come back and, and, you know, ask and, and say, we need to look at things or simply, you know, don't have the money. When the state comes back with cuts in local aid or local aid is fully funded and then there are other cuts in other parts of, of the state budget and, and for school services. And I'm, I'm really worried about that. I'm worried about the reimbursement that the school gets, you know, from, from different, the Medicare and, and whatnot. But mostly I'm, I'm concerned. We're looking, right now, we're planning on our fees and excise tax for that to go down 50% in the next six months. So to just tie this up with the overall school budget, we're going through the budget process now for the city one by one and the city council. And I'll, I actually, I will also share that with the school committee every month of, of what that, that the revenues are to expenditures. And then in the fall, we'll go through, you know, a very thorough process, not just a budget review, but a thorough process of where each department is. The last concern would be that, that I have about just the operations of the budget. The 1.09% of the total budget is basically the increase in interest on our debt exclusions. And we have interest payments and that affects cash flow. So if we don't have excise and property tax coming in or at a lower amount, no meals tax, no cannabis, you know, we have a cash flow issue and, and we really don't know what's coming at us. So, you know, the, you know, long loop here is to pay a contract and we're not getting the services or the services we reasonably expect that we wouldn't go to a transportation company to contract to, you know, to deliver meals. Although I appreciate the efforts and I know the kids and the families like getting the meals and the bus is coming. I have a grave concern. And the auditor vow is not going to pay those POs until somebody tells her at the Department of Revenue, the Department of Local Services, that they can be paid. I know that the AG is looking at it for certainly on my request, but a lot of other municipalities as well as the Department of Local Services and Sean Cronin waiting for that move in the legislature. And, and I think they're going to move on it. I mean, I, whether it passes or not, it's not, I don't think it's, it's not something in the ether, right, that they're putting off. They, they understand, the legislature really understands that this is something that has to be resolved. So, you know, when it votes. I, and I did not hear Superintendent Leclerc about any big changes from the Senate to the House, at least not to the point. So, you know, the expectation or what in the Senate bill, you know, I, I hope it's something we can just rely, just, just to know what in goodness to do.
Yes, and I, I, I will defer to Dale if, if Dale wants to add anything. But, you know, the, the worry that we also have from a school department side is, as I mentioned to everyone at the beginning of the evening, you know, we're thinking about next school year. And there's probably going to be guidance. And again, as Bill Evans said, we don't have a crystal ball, but there's probably going to be guidance that's going to indicate to us that we can't fill our buses like we have been filling our buses. We're going to probably have to get more buses, which is going to be an added expense that we don't have budgeted right now. So that is a serious concern, but we can't, I, I can't see any scenario in which for the whole year next year, we're going to be able to have two or three children in a seat on a bus every day. So our seven buses are going to, you know, go up to something else or we're going to have staggered runs or something's going to change. So, you know, my fear, and I, I'm sure that many of you share it, probably even the mayor, is that we want to have a decent relationship with our bus company because these are going to be challenging times going forward. And so, yes, that is a worry for us. I mean, as, as Nicole said, I'm in agreement. I mean, we would love it if we could just get one clear, consistent message about what to do. I mean, I really don't want to hold back paying our primary bus vendor who has been providing service throughout the town. Just tell us what to do and we can take care of it. The other one that we have a concern about, and we've learned more information from them, is our special education transportation provider, Vanpool, who has settled contracts with 80% of the communities that they serve. So they're putting a lot of pressure on us and, you know, we're worried about, we have legal guidance from our special ed attorney that if we don't have this continued contract with Vanpool, how are we going to get special ed children to their schools next year? They're, they're out of district schools and we won't, you know, if we don't have a vendor to bring them, then we're not providing them free and appropriate education. We're not providing faith. So, you know, how are we going to transport these kids if our vendor for special ed abandons us for non-payment? So that's, you know, these are all concerns. I wish there was an answer from the top.
I know, I know Dale wanted to speak. I know Dale wanted to speak, but I just, I'm trying to clarify. The special ed Vanpool is not providing service right now, correct?
Correct. Although they said they would.
But they want full pay or at least.
No, Dale has negotiated down with them as well.
Okay, but they want 80, I think is where they left that.
I'll let Dale answer that.
Dale keeps raising your hand.
Yeah, they're different though because what, the other one, we're getting 2,400 meals delivered with our buses. So in one case, we're talking about a service that is not being provided at all, correct? And then in the other, we're talking about using the buses to deliver meals. So now I'll turn it over to Dale and let her clear it up, clear it all up. Go ahead, Dale.
Just a couple of quick things. Where we are with Durham is 74 and a half percent.
And that's where. Special ed?
That's where it's been for quite a while. 74 and a half percent. And the vote that you took in the last meeting was at that 74 and a half percent. So there's been no change there. You did ask me to go back and talk to Vanpool about whether there was a possibility of lowering the price. And, and I'll remind you that when I started with them in March, they were at 92%. But as they've qualified for some of the incentives and reimbursements and programs that are available to business owners, the last time we spoke about this, they were at 78%. And they do special ed transportation for us. They do the homeless transportation and they do the McKinney-Vento. Those three together.
Right, but they're at zero service right now.
They are not being asked to do anything. They have offered repeatedly to do whatever the school department or the town needs them to do. They're, they're willing. We've not assigned them something. And they, you're right, they're currently not doing anything, but are, are really willing to. So since the last meeting, I had another conversation with them. And along with feedback that they were getting for some of the other districts that they service in Western Massachusetts, they went back and approached the pricing differently. It's cheaper for them to do business in the western part of the state than it is in the eastern part of the state because of wages. And so what they did was they restructured to offer a regional price to Western MAFs that would be 75% of their current daily rate for special ed. And they would drop the McKinney-Vento and the homeless to 60%. And that would be retroactive till March 13th. And that's where we are. And today, just maybe two hours ago, I got in writing from them that that's their last best calculation, if you will.
And Dale, so just to put numbers to the percent, so what, what does the 74.5% for Durham, what, what is that amount? I, I said 54 and then now I'm, I can't find it in my notes from the last time.
You, you, you were close. It's around there. It's $54,000, $55,000 a month for 10 months. So it, I don't know what that, that then gets calculated out to a daily rate per bus. And it's the daily rate per bus that discounted the, to 74. And it's the daily rate per bus that discounted the to 74 and a half percent.
And then what does Vanpool look like? And I I know maybe that goes up and down depending on, right, the the number of of kids, McKinney Vento and homeless and special education.
Roughly close to the same amount, roughly. On on an annual basis for everything that they do. But you're right, there is more there. Depending on uh, you know, what the students' needs are at the time.
Right, right. And who would be in it?
Yep. And if you want more um, like exact numbers, I certainly can send them to you. But, you know, ballpark, that's where where it is.
So we're looking at April, May and June is what they're asking for.
Um, half of March, April, May and June, yes.
We haven't paid our transportation bills yet.
Right, those, that that's outstanding invoices, but we have not paid.
And then the the only other um, thing that hasn't gotten mentioned tonight, but I mentioned it the last time. Is that um, it I hear over and over again in Department of Ed conference calls and meetings. That it is a condition of schools being able to qualify for the CARES money that they continue to pay their contractors. And I and I don't know if that's true or not, because schools have not been able to apply for any of that money yet. But I keep hearing that, that um, it's part of that legislation. So I think that's another aspect of this question that is pretty pertinent. Because my understanding is there that there are a lot of expenses that school districts are going to be able to. Um, apply for reimbursement of those expenses under the CARES Act. Um, cleaning supplies, um, protective equipment, um, potentially technology. Of uh, delivery of food, so some of these um, bus services potentially that we're paying. If if they're delivering meals to kids who um, can't get out of their homes, there's um, the suggestion. That some of that would be eligible for reimbursement under the CARES Act.
I I would just, I mean, the Treasury hasn't issued complete guidelines and we just submitted our first CARES Act. Or I shouldn't say, I don't even know if it's submitted. We're trying to submit it. The the system has been like really clunky. Um, and and I agree, there are definitely school reimbursement opportunities under FEMA and the CARES Act. Um. Uh, you know. Looking at reimbursement for non-school, um, it tends to go by fair market value. So if we're going to look at some reimbursement on. Um, the 75% and it's for delivering meals. Um, the amount to deliver meals and the amount to um. Transport children is is very different, right? It's like a kind of a. I don't know, education-based Grubhub versus a school bus. And and the difference in in that price is concerning to me. Um, and and I also, I mean. If we don't, this is what it comes down to. If we don't get Chapter 70 money or it gets cut. The transportation companies are going to be fine. And we're going to cut teachers.
Lori?
I don't want to jump the gun, but what our mayor just said. Has already been relayed to me by the union in the district where I work in Western Massachusetts. And I, as I said during our last meeting, I want to honor our contract with our transportation. But once again, I want to say that the state has not done what they said they would do for transportation when it comes to. Busing with regional transportation. If the mayor is concerned right now about Chapter 70 funding. I don't feel that we have to take on the burden of paying the fees for the bus company. At over 70% when we're not sure if we can pay our teachers next year. And I don't know why we're not talking about that yet. When, as I said, I received notification from my union that there may be cuts that they never thought they'd have to make. I'm just bringing that to the table.
And and that said, I mean, what Lori and I, you know, are about the chapter seven, and it sounds like a scare tactic. I, but I'd rather be scary now than surprising in and I don't know when. The state's passing a budget. I mean, they haven't, the House hasn't even put forth a budget. They just figured out how to vote. Um, remotely. I mean, they know how to vote remotely during the pandemic and and that's concerning too. You know, we're going to have to basically float and hopefully get one 12th payment based on 2020. I'm not going to hold my breath on that. And get through the summer and hope, knock on wood. Um, that it's figured out by November and they do a consensus budget. I mean, there are just so many moving parts and and I hear both Allison and Dale, you know, saying, you know, transportation is a bear. And and transportation contractors and it's not like there's a lot of competition. Um. You know, but. I, yeah, I don't know. I mean, with the rest of the budget, I'm taking care of what's in front of me. And and not moving too much in the future because I I don't know what it brings. Um, and I'm not getting any answers. I mean, the the state. I mean, I'm concerned about not paying this contract too. Um, if DLS and DOR comes back. Um, and says, you know, we should and Vanpool and Durham say too late or or whatnot, I um. Yeah, I I it it's it's really challenging.
Yeah, I just, and I just wanted to bring you that latest information. Let all of you know where we are, what things are still out there. We're still waiting for legislature. Um, you know, obviously, if we could look into our crystal ball and we knew what our budget. You know, if our Chapter 70 money was going to come through. I mean, there are all these what ifs that we just don't know. But I wanted to um, bring you more information so that you would have it, particularly because um. We didn't clarify the Vanpool um, as much last time, so I wanted to give you that information. Um, and let you know where we are with it. Um, so it's still an ongoing issue. Um, as you all saying, there are lots of ongoing issues that we're dealing with right now. Um, as the city side is as well. So um, we'll continue to trudge down this path and see. Um, where we go.
So um. Some districts that might be paying this without any negotiation back and forth. Are, I'm I'm guessing are the districts that have had a substantial increase um, in their budget. And is there a way that we can, as we go forward and toss this back and forth while we're waiting for some guidance from. Uh, the legislature, can we, can we get a list of which schools are paying? Is there any way to get a list of which school districts that are closer to our budget? Um, actually paying that money because, you know, there's a big difference. I'm looking at some of the districts that got, you know, 3% increases, 3 and 1/2% increases. That's a huge difference. Than a school district that has a 0% increase. Um. I just, is there a way to get those figures for us?
Well, I think there are a couple of different factors. Number one, you're talking about next year's budget and most of the districts. Most of the superintendents that I've had conversations with have paid. The invoices that they've received this year because that money has already been budgeted. So it's not the same pool of money as the money next year. Um, that's the first thing I would say. The second thing I would say is depending. Um, the region that you're in and depending on the company. That you have a rapport with or a contract with, you may or may not have unionized employees. North Hampton, for example, has Durham and Dale can correct me if I'm wrong. They have the same bus provider, but their bus drivers are unionized in North Hampton, so they make a much higher wage. So the amount of money or the percentage is different based on different communities. Our bus drivers are not unionized in East Hampton. So it's it's apples and oranges to some degree. So Dale has been diving into the weeds on that kind of stuff. Go ahead, Dale.
So um, the Department of Ed actually um, suggested that we work together. Um, in local groups that had the same um, contractor. And I did some of this work with both North North Hampton and Hampshire Regional. North Hampton. Um, the city of North Hampton um, signed an agreement to pay at 80% of their daily rate. And the last time I talked to Hampshire, it was their intent to model their agreement on North Hamptons. So they were headed down the road to paying 80%. Um, beyond um. Those two districts, I mean, uh, nobody else has Durham in the area. So um, I don't know off the top of my head whether people have settled or for what. But um, it 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 really varies and it varies greatly depending on um, how the specs are written for your contract. The age of the buses that you require, um, whether those, where you are in your contract. Because if you require all new buses and you're in year one, oftentimes um, it it it's a a higher price. A daily rate. Um, all those things come into play. So it's really hard to compare across districts. Uh, which is why the Department of Ed encouraged us to work locally with light districts who had the same contractor. That that's as close a comparison they thought you were going to be able to get without really, really getting in the weeds. And I don't know if I could get more information than that, but without context, I don't know how meaningful it would be. Just a list. And I'm not, I'm not trying to make it more complicated than it is, but it's pretty complicated.
Everything is complicated, Dale, right? This is just one more thing, right, on the on the pile?
Right, right.
So what do you need from us? Is this, are we waiting for this, waiting for?
Yeah, I think that, you know, we're, you know, I would love to have you say, go ahead and pay those bills, Alice.
I, you know what? Yeah.
Sound like you're going to give me that.
I'm not going to say that, but even if I was going to say that, our auditor would not pay them.
I know, I know. Um, so I guess that Dale has her hand up, so I'll let her speak.
Just um, just to add some color to this aspect of the discussion is, we currently do not have a bill from Durham. We don't have a bill from them. Um, I'd be worried if we did because we actually want them to deliver those meals. Um, but we don't have one at present. Um, Durham, we have um, bills for um, March, April, May.
Vanpool?
Vanpool, rather. Yes, thank you, Alice. Yeah. And they just arrived today. And I think it's because they've negotiated as far as they can and this is what it is and. They know that the committee um, and city will make a decision as to whether they're paying them or not. But I don't think there's room to continue to negotiate with them.
I mean, really for me, I'm hoping that the legislature will dictate what happens next. Because that will make my life easier. So I'm I'm okay putting this off, you know, and waiting. Um, hopefully we'll have new information soon and um. Then that will take the decision out of our hands.
Okay.
So to say, so.
Okay. So before we go on, does anybody want to weigh in on this at all at this point or we're just going to, you know, table it for now? Okay, all right. Um, so the next thing on your list for superintendent is your scoring table?
Yes, so um, Brian Miller has approached um, the principal, Mr. Evans and I. He is looking to um, purchase or to get a new scoring table for the gymnasium. This would be free, so that we all like that. But it requires that we have a sponsor display for the lifetime of the table. Brian says that our current table is difficult to use and it's getting old. So this is like what we use for basketball games, that sort of thing. Um, and a new one would be welcome. So he is suggesting um, that we maybe look at a non-commercial sponsor. Say, for example, the National Guard. Um, and Mr. Evans is um. Is willing to entertain that. But because it would involve a sponsor, I believe it needs to go through the school committee for approval for us to move forward with that free table. And I would show it to you, but you know, it's. Sort of looks, it's a table.
Anybody?
I think it's a great idea. I have no issue.
Jonathan?
Uh, so just to clarify, it sounds like the exact sponsor is up in the air though.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Um, it sounds like the exact sponsor is still up in the air though, as far as.
Yes, but Brian would pursue a non-commercial sponsor.
I just would, I mean. I think that there's some different reasons to pursue different sponsors. I think we have a lot of great organizations, local organizations that. Um, might be willing to sponsor something like this. Um, I would certainly have a concern about using some sort of military. Organization to be looking to sponsor for us to just get a free table. Um, so I I think that that's uh, to me, the commercial versus non-commercial might not be the the indicator of what type of sponsorship we might want to pursue. Um, and I would certainly look towards more local uh, as opposed to something uh, national or state.
And I think that's a good point there and we can definitely. Put that criteria around it to pursue a local sponsor first as a first line.
I agree.
Would we have the opportunity for that, for the, that to come back to us to be able to still decide if we approve that sponsor or? What was your sort of proposal in terms of how this process works?
Well, um, I think that you're more the big picture people and I think that's up to Mr. Evans and Mr. Miller to. Um, kind of select the sponsor that they feel would best be, that would be most appropriate. That's more of a building um, management kind of issue, I feel.
Marissa, do you want to, it looks like Bill wants to speak if you could, maybe if that'd be appropriate?
Sorry, Seth, we're fighting with my mute button. Um, I would, I would, I appreciate the input there um, around having a local sponsor. I I don't think that Mr. Miller and I were committed to anything in particular. I guess we're we're clear that we don't want it to um. To be for a product that we would think we would not want our students to use. Or that was in in any way unhealthy or just, you know, promoted the wrong kind of uh, message. So I think we would be very careful in selecting. Um, I I also very much appreciate the idea of having a local sponsor. There are many local organizations. Um, that are, that would love to, I'm sure, support that, to sponsor and and have that displayed that I think serves the community well and we'd be happy to entertain. All the proposals, but you know, it just, it won't be Gatorade, you know? Um, we we don't need to promote something that, you know, is is a. That that would not, you know, fit the the values of the uh, of the district.
But Dr. Leclerc did mention the National Guard, which does represent the military. I'm not saying that that's negative, but I think that as a school committee. We should hear who the sponsor would be before. It would just be put on something. It would just be put on something for many, many years. Is that possible for us to be able to?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't mind, I don't mind sharing that with the committee before moving forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I think that's a good plan. All right.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think so, do we?
Can we ask Sue?
Sue, do we need a motion to um approve the new scoring table with the um the proviso that we um approve of the sponsor? Or can they just?
You could do it one of two ways. You could do the approval now with that or wait until he has basically given him the go-ahead to go with it and then approve it once he has the sponsor so that you're approving the exact sponsor.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Makes more sense. If that's okay with everybody. Shannon, you look like you were kinda.
Oh, no, I was just gonna ask, can, can you guys move forward without our vote?
Yeah, he just wanted to know if he could, if he could begin pursuing it.
Absolutely, and I would feel a lot more comfortable voting with the knowledge of what's going to be on this table for the extent of its lifetime.
I don't know that it's any of our business.
I mean, it is representing the school district in some ways. It's just sort of my, like, I understand the line between, you know, what's building business and what's our business.
My opinion is that it's a fixture that is rather permanent. Um, if the, the committee has the ability to, you know, if it was on the outside of the building, I don't think it would be my decision. I think it would be the town's decision, you, as you represent the town. Um, cause it's their building, and I think any permanent fixture in the building that has a display of advertising, I do believe it's the school committee's purview to approve that, but I'm not an expert on it. I'm happy to make the decision if you want me to.
No, I think, Bill, what everybody's asking is that you pursue it, um, find out, um, you know, a number of or your preferred sponsor, and then just bring that to the committee and we vote that. Is that correct? Is that a good?
Yep.
That's what everybody, I'm looking for nodding heads or, okay. Yeah, so we'll just go with whatever on it as the time comes, cause right now we're, we have no idea who the sponsor will be. All right, should we go on to superintendent goals and progress?
Yes, but um, can I share? Can you allow me to share my screen?
Yeah. Marissa?
I'm gonna see how I can do that.
Um, there should be like a share screen. And I think you have to allow somebody else besides the host.
On the little dots on the right-hand corner up by her name, that's where you do it.
Are you on a laptop or on an iPad?
Um, I'm on a laptop, but I'm seeing.
Look it down at the bottom, right in the middle, it says share screen.
Yes, I see that.
Click on that, I think it should allow.
Advanced perhaps?
Yeah.
I don't wanna share my own screen. Let's see. I'm only seeing.
Cindy is the organizer, may I have to do it? I don't know.
I don't see any way, I can share my screen, but I don't see any way to enable you to share you.
You might have to go into the settings and change the setting from me only to anybody can share their screen.
Let's go to the answer. I think I'm seeing the same thing that Marissa.
Wait here, allow participants to share screen. Now, let's see if you can do that. Are you capable now?
Yep, I am.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Here we go.
Yay.
So what you are seeing in front of you, I hope, is my goals um document for this year, which um I shared with you in the fall. And then you had asked me for um some updates on progress. And um, so let me just go over my goals with you. Um, the student learning goal, yep, please, wait a minute, I'm shrinking the picture down. Okay. As the district leader, I will work with key administrators to identify district resources and monitor implementation, implementation practices at Center and Peppin Elementary Schools to ensure progress towards moving from turnaround status. Under progress, which is the fourth column, I gave you um in a blue teal kind of color, kind of mid-year progress. And then in yellow, I highlighted end-of-year progress. Um, for, to keep us kind of moving along, I won't verbally tell you all about that, but suffice it to say, we've been doing a lot around the turnaround um at the um Center and Peppin Schools. We did change the administration there in the middle of this school year, it seems like um years ago, but we just got a new principal there in January, believe it or not. So she's been making some great um headway, um diving right into that turnaround plan. So she's really had to get caught up on everything, and she's been doing a great job. We continue to have conversations with the um, the folks from the Department of Ed around our turnaround status. Um, and Julianne just secured a thirty-five thousand dollar grant um to support some of the strategies that we're trying to implement long-term um at the elementary school levels. So my second goal is, as the district leader, articulating and monitoring clear expectations related to instructional practices at the elementary level in the areas of ELA and MALE. Again, I've articulated the mid-year progress, the end-of-year progress. Um, we've tried to really identify end-of-year benchmarks. Of course, you will see in the highlighted yellow area for end-of-year progress. I felt it was necessary to put in parentheses after the school closure because obviously some of our best-laid plans kind of went out the window a little bit with the school closure. Um, we know that our students are not receiving the same exact education that they would if they were in the school building. So we've had to adjust our expectations, and um we've been working on that for the past month or so. Uh, the third goal is until the completion of the new pre-K three-eight building in September twenty-two, the district leadership will monitor, oversee, and ensure timely progress on the project. Um, we are doing, um, we have monthly building committee meetings, I have weekly construction meetings in addition to um any number of random meetings during the week um to meet with our construction company or to meet with our project managers to go over change orders. On the school level, we're doing a lot around um getting ourselves organized to go into a new building, how we will merge practices, staffing, um, all the different things that will go into that new building. Um, we even are, you know, looking at, um, we're using a backwards design model to say if we're entering the building in January of twenty-two with our oldest students, what are the steps that need to happen every month between now and the entrance into the school? So we are doing kind of a backwards design, if you will, thinking about what practices we need to put in place and and making sure that we don't forget anything. Um, the fourth goal was district leadership team will continue to review data. And so we have some mid-year progress and some end-of-year progress. Um, again, some of the end-of-year progress um is not as satisfying. Obviously, we're not doing the MCAS this year, so we'll be missing out on some major data points. But we're going to make do with what, you know, the information that we do have. Um, we'll continue to look at the uh data that um we work on with the Attorney General's Office, although we'll have three months less data this school year for our discipline audit. Um, but we're on track to finish up our um multi-year agreement with the Attorney General's Office. And finally, the district leadership team will accelerate the integration of technology in the middle and high school as a result of increased hardware availability. Um, obviously, we had some um big shifts um to get us up until the middle of the year. We had that earmark from the state. And the end of the year has really caused us to shift some of our planning based on remote learning and some of the um challenges that we faced as we moved into that model. We really need a lot more technology um in order to do remote learning effectively and looking at next year, that's going to be a big factor for us. So I will share this document out with everyone. Um, the other document that I'm going to put up on the screen right now is can you see the end-of-cycle summit of evaluation report?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, let me see. I'm gonna take this one down. All right, and then let me try sharing my screen again. And I wanna share this. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the document that all of you are so excited to fill out. Um, this is from the Department of Ed. It's the end-of-cycle summit of evaluation for the superintendent. So I'm just gonna quickly walk you through this. Um, you initially ignore the first few pages. So ignore page one and page two, cause they're like the summary documents, and you have to fill out pages three through seven in order to know what to put in page one and two, if that makes any sense at all.
It does.
Okay, so you start on page three, and I have put my goals, if if you can see the cursor. I've put those goals that I just read to you here. Um, so you would be critiquing me on those goals. And then next, you have the standards and indicators for effective administrative leadership. And then we go through each standard, and you'll be giving a rating. Remember, proficient is the norm, that's why that is highlighted in the gray. Um, and then it goes, you have a section for comments after each standard. And you just go through all four standards. And then once you have done that exercise, you go back up to pages one and two and extract the data that you had in pages three through seven and put your summary um information there. Now, um, I'm gonna share those two documents with you. I'm gonna stop sharing right now because um my question for you is I believe that you probably um want a workshop session. And I was going to share evidence with you, but I wanted to find out the format in which you wanted evidence. I think last year I gave you a binder or a folder with um evidence in it. But obviously, I'm not going to be able to put things in your hands this year. So I could create a folder electronically and drop things into it and share that out with you, but I wanted to talk that through and find out what your preferred method is.
I, I think that's a great idea. Uh, I'm all for it, and I think that simplifies it.
Yeah, so I'll do that electronically then.
Perfect.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Works for me.
So I'll share those two documents with you now, um, well, tomorrow. And then you can start to, you know, wrap your head around that. And then I'll put the evidence together and have that to you by the next time we meet. And I don't know what the process is you want from there.
So, so what we did before is we had our work session, and then I gave everybody, uh, I think it was a week to get it back, the data back to me. Then I put it back all together, and um then we, we share out your evaluation. Um, so are you thinking we should schedule our work session for two weeks from now, towards the end, closer to the end of May?
So it's up to you.
What are you doing a work session for if we're getting it all electronically? I think we just reviewed it ourselves and then we.
Good question.
Submitted it back.
That's fine.
Yeah. That's actually a good question. I was wondering that myself, if we're just ready to go through the material when we get it and begin our evaluation process, so.
And then we can contact Allison if we have questions about the materials, right?
Yep, certainly. So I can have that to you by the time we have our next meeting. I'll have a file shared with you.
Okay, so does that sound good? We, we skip the work session. We receive all the material, then we'll set a date where I'm getting the material back to me. We'll put it all together. Yes?
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds good to me. Sounds like a plan. Okay, so we're through with that uh part of the agenda, and now we're on to matters for action. Can you begin, Marissa, with um summarizing the correspondence that we got?
Yes, so um, we received an email from a coach at the high school um asking a question that is contract-related. So um, I'm not gonna go into further detail. We're going to have an executive session to handle that personnel-related issue privately, and then we'll report back once the matter is resolved.
Okay, and so I will start reaching out to everybody to schedule that executive session um after, at the end of this meeting. Okay, all right.
Okay, on to pay the warrants?
Yep.
Yes, okay. I would make a motion to um approve the accounts payable warrant dated May seventh, twenty-twenty in the amount of two hundred fifty-eight thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars.
I second that. Okay, roll call vote, Maren?
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon? You're on mute still. You're on mute, there you go.
Got it. Shannon Dunham, aye.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
Make a motion to approve the school payroll dated May seventh, twenty-twenty in the amount of five hundred fifteen sorry, five hundred fifty thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars and ten twenty-two. It's so small, I can hardly see.
I second that. Okay, Maren?
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Mayor? Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
I, Marissa Curry, aye.
And Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
Good, last thing.
All right, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes dated April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty from our regular and executive session.
I second that. Right, now it's all shifted, so we'll, Maren, if I can remember the order.
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Mayor? Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Yay, we did it.
All right, is there anything else before we have a motion from someone to adjourn? Shannon?
I just had a question. Um, Mayor, do you know if we are allowed to have Comcast in East Hampton? The reason I'm asking is um, the MASC has also put out a program for internet access through Comcast.
So by the existing contract with Trudder Spectrum, um, no. Uh, but other mayors have talked about because or what the service would be if Comcast is willing to do that with these portable devices. I, I don't know a lot of, I've just heard about it, so generally, no, and I think Comcast would have to give them like access to the hardware, so I MMA, the Massachusetts Municipal Association. MMA, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, I can check with them and see, like, follow up and, and see what they have to say about it. But I also heard that, um, AT&amp;T is looking to do the portable Wi-Fi, like, the little MiFi things, um. And I'm, I, I just, I don't know if that, you have to have a AT&amp;T account, or if it's something, um, through the, the school district itself, so?
Did you get the letter from MAS C? Do you want me to forward it to you? It has all the contacts?
Maybe, maybe, I mean, I'm sure I did. Yeah, that, that would be helpful. Huh?
Did everybody else get it?
Allison did not. She's waving in her mute state, saying no.
Can you send it to me? I didn't get it.
Not because you're not on the school committee, silly.
I, I know, but I would like if, if there's something?
She's the one who's gonna go after it. Allison has been hunting down internet service left and right.
Wi-Fi.
Yeah, I mean, she's?
Does anyone else need it? I'm sending it now.
Oh, good.
No?
Oh, Sue needs it.
Sue? Okay, so, all right, I got it.
Oh, excuse me.
That's all I had, sorry.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I second it.
All right, roll call to, to leave.
Maring Goldstein, aye.
Mayor? Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Jonathan? Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye. Cynthia Kuzynski, aye. All right, this meeting is adjourned, and I'm gonna thank everybody who attended. This was a very nicely attended meeting. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
26 is the next meeting?
Just a quick happy birthday to Marion.
Oh, yes, Feliz cumpleaños.
Um, is it the 26th, our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, what I have.
Okay.
The 26th?
Yes.
26th, tomorrow day.